Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I will call the Missoula City Council meeting of June 4th, 2018 to order. If you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. And please let the record note that with the exception of Ms. West, all council members are present this evening without objection. The minutes of the meeting on May 21st will be approved. Seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. DeBary.
I thought maybe you heard Ms. Raybine say, "There is an objection." Actually, on page 12, there are comments that I had made, and I need to change the word "obligate" to "obviate." It actually makes a big difference.
That seems very in-character, councilman. Any other changes? All right, they'll be approved. We'll move on to our schedule of committee meetings. Ms. Raybine.
Thanks. Let's see, we have four committee meetings, meeting this coming Wednesday, the 6th of June. Public Works will start out the day at 9:35 in the morning and go till 9:55. Landy's and Planning Committee, you okay, Jen? All right. Landy's and Planning Committee begins at 10:00 a.m. and goes to 10:15. Parks and Conservation will meet from 10:20 to 10:40. And Administration and Finance Committee will round out the day with a five-minute meeting from 10:45 to 10:50. All those meetings are being held this coming Wednesday, right here in the council chambers at 140 West Pine Street.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Any changes to the committee's schedule this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to the public comment portion of our agenda. This is your opportunity to comment on items not elsewhere on the agenda this evening. Any general public comment? I know you.
I'm John Wilkins, 501 Fairview. I was watching the city council meeting a couple of weeks ago when the slant streets were talking about that infill that was happening at the end. And every time the cameras showed the mayor and the city council person sitting beside him, the mayor was always intently looking at the person that was testifying, but the one beside him was always intently looking at his computer. And I don't have no idea what he was putting on his computer. He could have been maybe doing all the, you know, writing down what people said. But it didn't look good. And it makes me understand why some people say, "Well, they don't listen to us." Because if you don't look at them, at least give them the respect of, "Look like you're listening," I can understand why people do that. So I hope that people would remember that and do a little better.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Any other general public comments this evening? Mr. Moore.
I'd like to read part of a letter to the editor reported in 5/29/2018. More sensitivity to property taxes. A while back, Mayor John Ingean expressed concern over rising property taxes and pledged to give decisions that raise property taxes more scrutiny. On May 18th, the Missoulian announced that the city agrees to contribute $500,000 of property tax-funded money to the new library. I would argue that since the new library was funded with a voter-approved mill levy and funds beyond what was voter-approved was not only inappropriate, but certainly not consistent with keeping property taxes affordable. Perhaps mayor might not allow more sensitivity to property taxes be warranted. My request from this reading is, I've seen a lot of thousands of financial documents, and I've never seen one approved to pay another $500,000 when the voters approved the bond for the library. I wish to ask the city attorney and my two representatives to research the legality of paying the $500,000 on top of the voter-approved bond of whatever it was, about $30 million. Another comment, this is a headline, "Missoula City Council Pays $188,000 Art Park Overrun, Criticizes Project Managers." I'm sitting there thinking when I read this, the city council, and I'm assuming this is all correct, this is published here, criticizes the project managers on Art Park for $188,000. If I recall correctly, the legal fees for the water was supposed to be $400,000, and now they're $9 million. I haven't seen any criticism of the people responsible for allowing these legal fees to jump up to $9 million. And I request the mayor explain the legality of, the legality of how he could spend that much money for something that hasn't been approved by the taxpayers, not budgeted or any other thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any other general public comments this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Items on that agenda were approved unanimously in council standing committees. We save a little time on Monday nights by having Ms. Raybine read the list of consent agenda items aloud, and we vote on them all at once. We'll take comment on these items before we vote. Ms. Raybine.
Tonight's consent agenda has six items. The first is to ratify claims in the amount of $4,485,49.45 for checks that were dated May 29th of 2018. Number two is to approve claims in the amount of $2,485,840.13 for checks that are dated June 5th, 2018. Number three is to approve the community forum bylaws. Four is to approve the University District Neighborhood Council bylaws. Five is to approve the Riverfront Neighborhood Council bylaws. And six is to authorize the mayor to sign a lease agreement for the office building at 4014 Wyman Street for a term that begins June 1st, 2018, and ends on March 31st, 2022, in the amount of $6,200 per month plus utilities.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Any questions or comments from council members on the consent agenda? Mr. Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to separate item one from the consent agenda for the date of May 29th. There's an $864.22 payment to law firm Perkins Coie, and I don't think I really have to go into any more explanation on that.
Additional comments or questions? Anyone in the audience care to comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote on item number one.
On consent agenda item number one, Anderson. Anderson votes yes. Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Becerra. Becerra votes yes. Kares. Kares votes yes. DeBary. DeBary votes yes. Harp. Harp votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Merritt. Merritt votes yes. Ramos. Ramos votes no. Von Losberg. Von Losberg votes yes. And we have 10 ayes, one nay, and one absent.
And on items two through six, excuse me.
On the rest of the consent agenda, Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Becerra. Becerra votes yes. Kares. Kares votes yes. DeBary. DeBary votes yes. Harp. Harp votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Merritt. Merritt votes yes. Ramos. Ramos votes yes. Von Losberg. Von Losberg votes yes. And Anderson. Anderson votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That is 11 ayes and one absent.
And the consent agenda is approved. We'll move on to comments from city staff, agencies, boards, commissions, authorities, and the community forum. And we have a number of neighborhood council reports this evening. We'll start with the Riverfront Neighborhood. Mr. Van Dyk.
May 22nd of, I guess it's about two weeks ago, we had our first general meeting for the Riverfront Neighborhood at Silver Park Pavilion. Despite the wind, about 40 people showed up, including a few guest speakers. The Riverfront Neighborhood Council leadership team meets every second Monday at Bernice's Bakery, if anybody would like to drop in. On our agenda, aside from the guest speakers, we made an amendment to our bylaws. The brunt of it was changing a "may" to a "will," or maybe a "will" to a "may." We also selected three people to the leadership team. Myself and Ramona Flaitner were filling in as interim members of the leadership team. We also added Jean Kylie. Our guest speakers for the evening were Ed Weatherby from the Old Sawmill District to let us know about what's going on with developments in the Old Sawmill District. A large contingent of our leadership team also comes from the Old Sawmill District, so, and Ed has been attending our leadership team meetings regularly, so we thanked him for his frank comments on what's going on in the new Old Sawmill District. Jean's also the executive director of Garden City Harvest Program, talked about their programs in their 20th year here in the Garden City. Dennis Bowman from Missoula Water told us about prioritizing maintenance projects across the city, across the grid. Shane Stack from Montana Department of Transportation, and Katie Kleats, is it Kleats or Klights?
Katie Kleats?
Kleats, I thought so, from Big Sky Public Relations also, came to talk about the Russell Street Bridge project, although it's really, I think everybody in attendance was, you know, is concerned about the Russell Street project, the greater project, as it's going to impact neighborhoods all the way up to, well, almost up to Mount Street. On behalf of the Riverfront Neighborhood, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Harp for making time to speak with us and provide some comprehensive answers to questions our neighborhood has. For example, the proposal to change the lane marking on Fifth and Sixth Streets, and some questions about proposals for a California street. Lastly, for those here in the audience and for everybody playing the home version on MCAT, your neighborhood council is a great place to find out how all the development that's happening in town will impact your own neighborhood, and is also an excellent forum to voice your concerns and even lend a hand in making it a better place. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And all the way from Grant Creek, Mr. Ludler.
Bert Ludler, we had about two dozen folks on May 15th attend our general meeting. Andy Morris from Snow Bowl discussed the ski area's expansion and getting skiers to and from Snow Bowl. There's little room for additional parking at the lodge, but now that they're going to be providing more beginning and intermediate terrain, they're likely to have a lot more skiers. He thinks that buses may play a role in transporting some of those skiers. Now, they have a ski bus that leaves their dirt parking lot at the mouth of Grant Creek at the beginning of the day, returning at the end of the day. Perhaps there could be a more frequent schedule for that bus, or perhaps there could be a bus from the university that would take skiers directly to Snow Bowl where they want to be on the weekends anyway. So Morris said that Snow Bowl's dirt parking lot at the mouth of Grant Creek isn't fully used in the summer or some of the winter, and Snow Bowl is happy to work with the community if that lot could also serve as a park-and-ride facility. Bill Pfeifer from Mountain Line discussed bus service to Grant Creek, which is non-existent right now. We're also not taxed for the bus service, so we do take that into consideration. The closest route right now is on Expressway at Reserve, and so if a park-and-ride were wished in our part of the world, Pfeifer thought it would make more sense to have it along that route than to have it somewhere else, given how tight that route is. Kevin Davis, Grant Creek resident and member of our leadership team, discussed his efforts to work with the city and state to improve traffic flow and safety on Reserve Street. Kevin has a Facebook page, Less Improve Missoula's Reserve Street, and has been convening regular meetings of folks interested in working on this topic. I'm thankful that Kevin looks forward to a long and healthy life, because this was a topic I didn't think fit my demographic very well. I discussed the plowing of the Grant Creek Trail during the past winter. It was done with a partnership between the Grant Creek Trails Associations, some of the homeowners associations, and financial assistance from the city. The Grant Creek Trails Association hopes that the city budget provides for this trail to be plowed in coming years. Martha Bacora, one of our council persons, discussed the Grant Creek Trail and Reserve Street and ways citizens can continue working to improve them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ludler. And our community forum report this evening comes from Mr. Stevens.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Stevens. I'm here to report on the May 24th meeting of the community forum. We had two presentations. The first one was on bike sharing in Missoula. Jordan Hess, ASUM Office of Transportation, and Ben Weiss, Missoula Bike Ped Program Manager, did a presentation. And they did a show on title. They brought two bikes from possible bike-sharing vendors. One was a Lime bike, and one was a Spin bike. Very interesting presentation. Their various colors of lime, lemon, and orange reminded me of a citrus farm. And our second presentation was the annual Title 20 update, presented by Jen Grass from Missoula Planner 2. And she discussed various aspects of Title 20, including amendments that are being proposed for this year. We only had one action item at the community forum, and that was a reallocated funds request from Farview's Paddy Canyon, which was approved, was in the amount of $33.41, which illustrates that unbridled spending continues at the community forum level. We had two, one change in the Neighborhood Project Fund Committee. Dave Christman, his term has expired, and Colleen Beal was approved as his replacement. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. With that, we will move on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. State law and our own council rules set guidelines for inviting community comment in a formal way on a variety of issues, and following a staff report on each of these, council and I will invite comment. Council typically votes on the same evening as a public hearing, unless one council member elects to return that item to committee for further consideration. And we'll take these in order this evening, beginning with a resolution amending the fiscal year 2018 budget. And Mr. Wilson. And Mr. Bowman.
I needed, I needed help. So the, the action we're seeking tonight is a resolution amending the appropriations for the city current budget, and the total expenditures of $419,471. This includes three items. One is to enable the building, or the Development Services Department to hire a new building permit coordinator, also in the gas tax, new gas tax funds available. We'd like to appropriate money to move forward with some street work. And then in the water utility fund expenditures to fill a few new positions. I'm going to speak to you tonight about the gas tax issue. Don Varu wasn't able to attend, so Dennis is going to talk to you about the Development Services Permit Coordinator, as well as the Water Department appropriation. And just really briefly regarding the gas tax appropriation, in the last legislature, a bill was adopted that expanded the existing gas tax program with the state to provide money for roadway improvements, reconstruction, maintenance, a variety of things that are already allowed under the gas tax. But this is new money that wasn't available when the budget was adopted, and we're asking you to appropriate those funds so we can move forward with a mill and overlay project, some asphalt repair work in association with some of our water main replacement projects, and as well as some drainage improvements related to one of our curb and sidewalk projects. All really well-needed work that we wouldn't have been able to do without this new fund. Dennis Bowman, Superintendent from Missoula Water, and also fill-in Development Services Speaker. First one I'll talk about is the Development Services. Under general supervision, Permit Coordinator I will provide customer-friendly service in coordinating and monitoring the permit applications, process, and plan reviews with Development Services staff and outside agencies. This is the first in a specified class of successfully responsible Permit Coordinator positions. The Permit Coordinator I is distinguished by the focus on residential building, permit processes, and other over-the-counter permits. This position is being funded by the Undesignated Building Fund balance for the remainder of fiscal year 2018. Fiscal year 2019 budgeted revenues will fund this increase in FTEs in FY19 and beyond. The second one is the Water Utility Fund. The two utility locate positions will be located, will be locating Public Works Utilities and surveying city utility assets. Contracted utility locates are budgeted currently at $92,000 a year, so there will be significant savings. Bringing this in-house will realize significant savings to the city utilities. The two utility locate positions will be funded 42% from the wastewater utility, undesignated fund balance, and 58% from the water utility fund balance for the remainder FY18. FY19 revenues in the same proportion will fund these positions for FY19 and beyond.
Thank you, gentlemen. With that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience care to comment on these budget amendments? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council? Ms. Kares?
I watched the news last night that talked about our council entertaining, or didn't say fiscal year 18, it said entertaining 2018 budget amendment requests. And the news did not fully encompass the fact that all three of these positions, I'm getting to a question, I promise, I believe are funded not through additional, not through additional taxes of our citizens, but through fund balances, gas tax, and gas taxes. And so I ask Mr. Wilson to please confirm that all three of these are funded through means that do not impact citizens' taxes.
Absolutely correct. None of these are the general fund. The only one that's related to a tax is the gas tax, which comes from statewide revenues and is reallocated to the cities.
Further questions? Seeing none, this happens in Ms. Harp's committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we adopt a resolution amending the annual appropriations for the city of Missoula, Montana, a set forth in the fiscal year 2018 budget and capital improvement program that increases the total city budgeted expenditures by $419,471, and appropriate the building inspection fund, gas tax fund, and water utility fund expenditures in the amount of $419,471, in order to add a Building Permit Coordinator I to water utility locate personnel and public works projects related to the receipt of Barca funds.
Thank you. That motion is in order. Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Von Losberg.
Thanks. Ms. Kares beat me to the punch and was smarter by posing it in a question. I was just going to draw attention to the same fact that in the building inspection portion of this, third of this, that it comes from that, that fund, there's no change of mill rate, and no change of property taxes. Specifically, it might have been mentioned that in the gas tax, that we weren't allocated, as Mr. Wilson pointed out, this from the legislature until Q4, I believe it is, that we're receiving this money for. This happens sometimes with funds such as firefighting revenue that we receive that we don't know about at the beginning of the budget. And then finally, both, I think we can never too often mention that the water utility and the wastewater utility are, I just blanked, they are enterprise funds, thank you, and operate such that their revenues are done via the rates for those services. Thanks.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing, we'll have a roll call vote.
On the resolution amending the budget, Becerra. Becerra votes yes. Kares. Kares votes yes. DeBary. DeBary votes yes. Harp. Harp votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Merritt. Merritt votes yes. Ramos. Ramos votes yes. Von Losberg. Von Losberg votes yes. Anderson. Anderson votes yes. Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That's 11 ayes and one absent.
And the motion is approved. We'll move on to our second public hearing on a petition of 20 feet of Bickford Street, adjacent to Lot 13, Block 60 of South Missoula Edition. And our staff report this evening comes from Ms. Baker.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jenny Baker. I'm with Development Services, and tonight I am going to present to you a right-of-way vacation request for 20 feet of Bickford Street, northeast of the intersection with Marshall Street. This request is made by Ryan Frye of the Marshall Properties Group, and the reason for the request is to increase the buildable area of the lot, which the owner proposes to develop as with four new dwelling units. This vicinity map shows the area of the request. It is, the parcel is outlined in yellow. It's located at the corner of Bickford and Marshall Streets, just east of the railroad tracks along the Bitterroot Trail and across from Ronan Street. It is part of the Rose Park Neighborhood Council and City Council Ward 3. This is a closer view of the parcel, and it currently has a single dwelling on it at the front, which will remain, and a small garage at the back of the lot, which will no longer be there. It is surrounded by a chain-linked fence, which encroaches into the right-of-way. There's a boulevard sidewalk along the Marshall Street frontage of the property, but no pedestrian facilities along either side of Bickford. On this slide, the area that is requested to be vacated is outlined in red. It's 20 feet wide and extends from Marshall Street at the front of the lot back to the alley. The total area to be vacated is about 2,600 square feet, and if this request is approved, the area will be added permanently to Lot 13, which is beside it. Bickford Street at that area, at that intersection is an 80-foot-wide right-of-way, and the vacation will reduce the right-of-way to 60 feet. The street dead-ends at this block, at the end of this block, at the alley to the northeast of the parcel. Now, I'll show you some pictures of the site. This shows the area to be vacated. It is actually within the chain-linked fence, because the fence is in the right-of-way. And those two trees that you see there are street trees, which are also within the right-of-way. And we will talk a little more about those trees in a minute. This photo is taken from the back of the lot. You are standing, sort of looking towards the alley, and, and that building beside it, the garage that you see there will be gone. The building beside it is a new one that's just gone up. The section of Bickford Street that extends beyond the alley at the back of this parcel was already vacated in 1965 by Resolution 2579. So the area that you see delineated in black there is actually no longer right-of-way, but part of the parcel adjacent to it. Parks and Recreation submitted a comment on this vacation request, saying that they do not support it because of the removal of the existing mature street trees within the Bickford Street right-of-way. This is a very preliminary site layout provided by the applicant and adjusted so that you can see here. The two green circles, sort of at the bottom of that slide, show the location of the trees. And it also shows that, as proposed, the applicant is, is going to keep those trees. And even with the addition of the four new dwelling units, they feel that they should be able to maintain those trees in their location, and then will add further street trees in the right-of-way. At the Public Works At the Public Works Committee, there was a request to investigate adding a condition for affordable housing to this request. Development Services staff had meetings with both a deputy city attorney and the director of Housing and Community Development, both of whom thought that this instance was not a good one to apply that condition for different reasons. The deputy city attorney thinks that the benefit is not commensurate with the possible burden of the condition, and the director of Housing and Community Development thought that the condition could increase costs, make the units harder to sell, and jeopardize overall project feasibility. As a result, staff asks for further policy guidance for city council in the event of future requests for affordable housing conditions. There is one condition of approval that is included with this request, as recommended by staff, and that is to include plans for installation of curb gutter, an eight-foot-wide boulevard, landscaped boulevard planted with street trees, and a minimum five-foot-wide sidewalk within the remaining Bickford Street right-of-way. Subject to that condition, the staff recommendation is to adopt a resolution to close and vacate public right-of-way being 20 feet of Bickford Street, lying adjacent to Lot 13 in Block 60 of the South Missoula Edition, located northeast of the intersection with Marshall Street. That's my presentation, and if you have questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. With that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone care to comment on this proposed vacation? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council members? Ms. Harp?
Jen, could you clarify? From our last committee meeting tonight, something seemed to have changed, but maybe I'm just misheard you. Will the existing trees remain and additional street trees be added, or are those two disappearing?
So, the applicant is stating that they believe they can maintain these trees, certainly the one at the front of the lot, and the second one with construction may have some damage to the roots. But he will try to keep both of those there, as shown here, and then there will be additional trees that will be added as part of the new boulevard landscaping along Bickford in the remaining right-of-way.
Follow it. So why did Parks and, why did the Parks Department deny that, or they didn't vote in favor of the?
So the Parks comment was received before any idea of being able to maintain these trees came up, so we include it because that's their comment, but I don't think they had seen this proposal, which shows that the applicant thinks they can keep them.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions? Seeing none, Mr. Hess?
Thank you, Mayor Inken. I move we adopt a resolution closing and vacating 20 feet of Bickford Street, lying adjacent to Lot 13, Block 60 of South Missoula Edition, located northeast of the intersection with Marshall Street, as described in Exhibit A. And I'd like to speak to it briefly.
Mr. Hess?
We had a good discussion in the Public Works Committee about the proposed affordability conditions. I think there's some really good intent in, in exploring those conditions. However, it was not, the committee decided it was not appropriate at this time to move forward with any conditions. There is interest in developing a, a policy surrounding right-of-way vacations and possible conditions surrounding affordability. Ms. Baker covered that very well, and I just wanted to get that on the record, that we'll be bringing that forward in due time in consultation with staff and other council members.
Further discussion? Ms. Jones?
I just wanted to also reiterate, I think we did have a good discussion regarding the affordable housing component, but we need to back up a little bit and create a policy so people will have that information when they impart on a project. But I'm in support of the right-of-way vacation on this specific project. It is in line with our growth policy. It's going to be more densely built. I do like the fact that they've created a project which will maintain some green space in the middle, so they're, they're creating a livable situation for people. And these builders have a reputation of really shooting for the, the middle median price point, so hopefully this comes in as something that is attainable for some people in Missoula, which would be great, and I'm thrilled that they can hopefully save the trees, so I'm in support of it.
Mr. DeBary?
Just to echo Ms. Jones and Mr. Hess's comments around developing a policy around right-of-way vacations, or rights-of-way vacation, got to get the right S in the right spot. At a previous meeting, I had also made a comment about looking carefully at the, approaching to the greatest extent possible the maximum density permitted by zoning. And so I'm hopeful that as a part of our ongoing conversation around vacation of right-of-ways that, that we will include that, because I think that when we're not maximizing that potential, we're, we're leaving potential housing units on the table, as it were, and I think that's something that we should be considerate of as we move forward. I don't have any particular objection to this. I think this will be a, a benefit to the community, and I'll support the motion.
Further discussion? Ms. Harp?
After chatting with the developers a little bit after, during the committee meeting, I, I also just wanted to point out, the house that they built recently, that's not in that diagram, but just to the, I guess that would be to the east, they've left a, a space for a common courtyard for all of those, those units, which I thought was really clever and very thoughtful in terms of using the site development. So I just wanted to give them a little shout-out for kind of thinking collectively and collaborating and thinking about developing a good community for those particular residents.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing, we'll have a roll call vote.
On the resolution vacating, I think it's Keres. Keres votes yes. DeBary. DeBary votes yes. Harp. Harp votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Merritt. Merritt votes yes. Ramos. Ramos votes yes. Von Laasberg. Von Laasberg votes yes. Anderson. Anderson votes yes. Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. And Becerra. Becerra votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? It's 11 ayes and one absent.
And the vacation is approved. Our third public hearing this evening is on an ordinance to amend Title 20, which is our zoning chapter, and our staff report this evening comes from Ms. Gress.
So yes, good evening. For the record, I am Jen Gress with Development Services, and tonight's hearing is in consideration of the annual update to Missoula's zoning ordinance of Title 20. I'll be giving you an overview of the process, a general description of each topic, and cover key topics for each of the 11 topics. So the draft ordinance dated April 19th, supplemented by the summary of LUP amendments, is the reference document that we'll be using. It's also in order, or topic order. And in addition, we've created a draft ordinance dated June 1st that shows all the amendments in numerical order, and it includes the proposed amendments made by LUP and is the document that will be adopted. Title 20 was adopted in 2009 with the intent to revise and update the city's zoning ordinance, making it more user-friendly and intuitive. That update included a process for regular review to address issues that may be difficult to understand, need clarification, or need updating because of changing conditions. The process so far has included a presentation of a summary update list to land use and planning on January 3rd. Comments have been solicited in multiple ways. Planning Board held their public hearing on April 3rd and continued it to April 17th. The Land Use and Planning Committee discussed the proposed amendments over four meetings, and the updates are before you tonight for adoption. Comments have been submitted in writing and verbally throughout this process, and have been considered by the Planning Board and the Land Use and Planning Committee in making recommendations to this package. Notification of this year's maintenance items included an agency and interested party memo sent out on March 22nd. Project information has been included on the city's webpage, was included in the city's weekly digest, was, legal ads have been appeared in the Missoulian, and then we also met with the community forum for their May 4th meeting. The proposed 2018 Title 20 updated amendments are subject to and meet the review criteria stated in Title 20 under Section 208504OG zoning amendments review criteria. The list of proposed potential changes addressed 11 different topics and includes 71 proposed amendments. Overall, the amendments are intended to clarify, streamline, and modify existing regulations, and I'll go over these topics in a little bit more detail in a minute. This year's proposed amendments generally clarify the regulations by making sections easier to read. Other proposed amendments will clarify what sections of the code apply for specific development options, such as townhome exemption developments, and include a new definition in the terminology chapter, several actually. Duplicate language is proposed to be removed. Parking for accessory dwelling units is addressed. Cross-references will be corrected, and the already-approved Rattlesnake Gardens neighborhood character overlay district is being codified into the code. Other proposed amendments generally streamline the procedures by removing the conditional use process for accessory dwelling units, removing the protest provision for the bed-and-breakfast uses that are required to go through conditional use, provide for a more expedient route for board-approved projects to be extended timewise, and simplify the notification process for tourist home uses. Modification of regulations include providing additional guidance for some townhome exemption developments, requiring accessory dwelling units to have an address on the property so emergency personnel can locate them, introducing sideeries into Title 20, and staggering the term expirations for members of the Board of Adjustment. Excuse me. So there's several proposed amendments for townhome exemption developments, also known as Teds, but in general, there's been confusion on the distinction between the terms townhome, which is a type of ownership that's created through a townhome exemption development, and townhouse, which is a specific building type that's already addressed in Title 20. Additionally, there's been confusion regarding whether some multi-dwelling standards should apply to these developments. We're proposing amendments that would clarify this distinction and would direct two-unit and three-plus unit attached building types to the existing townhome standards when applicable, providing for a more desirable and consistent development. The amendment should guide projects away from using multi-dwelling design standards and will remove the required percentage of landscaping and bike parking for projects that are essentially single-dwelling developments. Two or more amendments, two more amendments will clarify that a unit is not a building, it's a dwelling unit, and will allow interior separation of dwelling units to be six feet in zones that permit sideyard setbacks of seven and a half feet or less. In the townhouse standards, the amendments propose expanding the concept of a street and alley, making it clear that dwellings in TED projects are required to have separation from public or private streets and alleys. Amendments will cross-reference the townhouse standards to the townhome exemption developments, creating more consistent and predictable projects. Another proposed amendment includes adding an option for cash-in-loo for required park area, including guiding criteria to ensure the best use of the land. The particular approach was modified by LUP and is shown in the draft ordinance. Excuse me. New terminology will be included to help define the land area owned by each dwelling. When townhome exemption developments are filed with the county, the clerk and recorder, for all intents and purposes, they're creating parcel-like configurations that includes individual dwelling units, the land beneath the units, and some of the area around the units. Yet TED projects are not established subdivision parcels. Defining this area of land as a parcel creates inconsistencies in the application of the zoning regulations. So in order to be clear, staff is suggesting defining these land areas as TED ownership In January of 2017, an application for a tourist home located in the central business district was reviewed by staff, and the question of whether notification of surrounding area was required, was raised. So the discussion clarified council's intent that tourist home developments in non-residential districts do not need to notify surrounding areas, so an amendment is being included to make council's intent clear. A second amendment will modify the notification area required in residential districts to only include the closest parcels to a proposed tourist home, making the notification area consistent with a new proposed accessory dwelling unit notification area. Currently, when notification is required for a tourist home, it's the responsibility of the applicant to produce the notification list. In most other situations, it's staff that's responsible for doing the notification. And since state law dictates that the city may not provide distribution lists that include property ownership information to the public, and the tools that staff uses to create these distribution lists are not readily available to the public, an amendment is proposed to reduce the notification area to property owners and residents to one parcel deep surrounding the parcel the proposed tourist home will be located on. This is in keeping with the suggested notification process discussed in early summer at LUP regarding notification processes for proposed tourist homes. Proposed amendments for accessory dwelling units occur in the accessory uses and structures chapter. Proposed amendments include removing the conditional use process and allowing ADUs to be permitted by right in all zoning districts, but still maintaining a notification process for those parcels closest to the proposed ADU. Over the past five years, there've been a total of 24 ADU applications. Seventeen were conditional use, and city council approved all those requests with any substantial conditions. Each conditional use request has required a lot of staff time to coordinate, report, and record city council's decisions. Making this change will simplify the process and represent a major efficiency for land use planners and applicants, while still keeping surrounding neighbors notified. Notification will occur for detached and internal addition ADUs in certain zones wherever conditional use was required. Title 20 currently contains standards that apply to developing ADU, and there is no intent to remove those standards. A second amendment will clarify the parking space required when developing an ADU can be used by any unit on the parcel, not just the new ADU. And the last proposed amendment regarding ADUs will require the unit be posted with a street address according to the city fire code. New units are frequently placed behind or inside of existing structures, and having this standard will help the fire department find them. As discussed earlier, regarding the notification process for a tourist home, the notification process for a detached internal, for a detached or internal addition ADU in certain zones will be similar by contacting adjacent property owners and residents one parcel deep. So the next topic is building as a sign. First, I'd like to explain why we're addressing this and what we mean by it. So while working on the Missoula Design Excellence Project, concerns were raised over the potential for buildings to be used as signs. Essentially, building is a sign when the architecture of the building becomes that sign. For example, you could remove the logo and the text from the sign up, from the building up here at the top, and still know that that is a Verizon building. The building is essentially a sign. Rather, the goal is to be, to see the signage developed as subordinate to the building, so this lower picture here, if you remove the logo signage, you wouldn't know that this is a Verizon building. And then a more complete definition is going to be provided in the terminology section. During the design excellence process, the consultants summarized input and analysis on our existing code and recommended direction for addressing community character by developing and presenting a strategy report. This report was reviewed by the community last fall and presented to the Land Use and Planning Committee of City Council last November. Recommendations from the strategy report set us up for addressing building as a sign citywide and as a part of this annual amendment process. The report also recommended we take the approach of establishing thresholds for the use of corporate color in building design. You'll find we carry that concept through these amendments with the intent to accommodate corporate design that is consistent and compatible with the character of Missoula. Over the last few years, several developments have brought, have been brought to staff's attention, the need to develop standards that prevent so-called buildings as signs. With assistance from Winter &amp; Company, the consultants for the ongoing Architectural Design Excellence Project, staff proposes several amendments within the sign ordinance chapter to clarify what constitutes a building as a sign, and to strengthen the language that would limit such types of signage on commercial structures. Amendments involve expanding the list of prohibited signs to state that buildings as a sign is prohibited unless approved through the special signs review process. We're also defining and clarifying the extent of building as a sign through revisions in the special signs review by design review board section. Modifying the language in the sign measurement section to capture corporate color as being included in the maximum dimensions of a sign, and includes thresholds for the use of corporate colors. Staff's been mindful that it is important, any changes do not limit desired flexibility and room for artistic expression. So how a project would be reviewed begins with the applicant submitting any logo information and corporate color along with exterior wall colors with their application. The staff reviews the submittal to determine if the proposal exceeds the The staff reviews the submittal to determine if the proposal exceeds the allowable wall sign measurements or building as a sign thresholds. First, the proposal is evaluated and compared to the sign area allowed in the appropriate zoning district. Next, the proposal is evaluated for the extent of how logo characteristics and color are incorporated into the building's design. Are they used as accent trims, canopies, or more? Does it go into siding, cladding, or paint? And has the logo been extended into any architectural features? Next, a determination is made on whether the use of corporate color exceeds the thresholds provided in Title 20. If it does, the proposal will be denied by staff, and the applicant has the opportunity to request the project be reviewed by the design review board. In addition, at any time if staff feels it's necessary, they can also request that a proposal be sent to the design review. Proposed amendments to the tourist home section clarify a proposed tourist home use is not required to notify surrounding neighbors if proposed in a non-residential district. This amendment is based on a zoning officer opinion created after conversations with City Council. A second amendment will change the calculation method for neighborhood notification to be one parcel deep rather than a fixed distance of 150 feet, matching the notification area proposed for the ADUs, making it easier for the public to comply with the regulations and still informing the surrounding residents. These diagrams will be included to help explain which parcel should receive notification regarding a new tourist home and are the same as those noted earlier in the ADU discussion. Staff has seen an increase in requests for cideries, and we are suggesting this use be included into Title 20. State law doesn't reference a ciderie specifically, but according to the State Liquor Division, the laws for winery are applied to ciderie businesses. And up until now, staff has been reviewing cideries using the winery classification in Title 20. Cideries are proposed to be allowed as either permitted or conditional in some business, commercial, or industrial districts. An additional amendment includes a description of cideries in the industrial use classification. And since cideries and taverns are being considered permitted in Central Business District, wineries are also being proposed as permitted in the Central Business District for consistency. There are two amendments addressing bed and breakfast uses. The first inserts a cross-reference to the newly adopted commercial uses not exceeding 30,000 square feet section. The second amendment proposes to remove the protest petition from the bed and breakfast conditional use process. Bed and breakfast uses are the only conditional use process to Title 20, in Title 20, subject to a protest petition, and there's never been a protest for a bed and breakfast use. This section includes procedures for conditional use projects, design review board cases and variances. Proposed amendments to the review and approval procedure section will make it easier to extend projects approved by Board Action. Currently, these approvals expire if a final certificate of zoning compliance has not been issued within two years of the approval. So that means that the project would have to become, be completely finished in two years. And most projects that undergo these types of reviews are so complex that it would be onerous to expect a project to be final within two years. However, if someone is serious about completing their project, they could apply for and receive a building or zoning compliance permit within those two years. So instead of requiring the issuance of a building or zoning compliance permit and a final certificate of occupancy within two years of the approved date, staff recommends that only the building or zoning compliance permit must be issued before the two-year expiration date. A second revision is proposed for the section addressing the procedure to request a one-year extension to those aforementioned two-year approval periods. As currently written, the approving body may extend the approval period for up to one year if the applicant re-appeals for the project, repays applicable fees, and goes through the hearing again. So this section seems punitive to require so much work and expense for the applicant and staff to bring the request back through the same process again just to extend the approval for one year if there are good reasons for that extension. Staff is recommending that an extension request for no more than one year could be decided by the zoning officer if it's determined that there are unusual circumstances that warrant the extension. All three sections are proposed to be amended the same way, removing the requirement of a final certificate of zoning compliance and allowing the zoning officer to extend the expiration period up to one year. Proposed amendments to the terminology section will include a new definition of attached, which in turn will require an adjustment to the definition of garage. We're proposing the removal of one of two definitions for non-conforming sign, and will update the definition of microbrewery, micro-distillery because the state regulations were amended. An additional amendment will change how gross floor area is measured in order to support the use of today's options for energy-efficient building materials. And then the last proposed amendment removes the definition of sign under canopy or marquee because these signs are addressed by the existing definition of hanging signs. The parking section will clarify terminology being used and will include a new line to address parking for casinos, as well as a new parking standard requiring one parking space for the detached house and townhouse building types with a maximum of 600 square feet or less. The next set of amendments involve creating a new section to address the process of public forum. The state requires governmental agencies developing a parcel contrary to local zoning codes hold a public forum for public notification. Proposed amendments include a new section in Title 20 in an effort to be more transparent and informative. And the last topic for the evening is a miscellaneous category which contains 11 non-related items, in part creating consistency in terms in the residential section of Chapter 5, shifting enterprise commercial use from conditional to permitted in M2 zones, which also requires a change to Chapter 40, codifying the existing Rattlesnake Gardens neighborhood character overlay zone in Chapter 25, reworking the parcel and building standards for accessory uses in the residential districts for more clarity with no change to content, amending the landscape chapter of 65 to adjust treatment of buffering, staggering the expiration dates of the Board of Adjustment members in Chapter 90, and updating the description of communications services establishment in the commercial use classification section of Chapter 105. Staff recommends the City Council approve the proposed 2018 Title 20 update amendments as shown in the draft ordinance dated 6/118. And that concludes my presentation. If there are any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Chris. And with that, I will open the public hearing on these many amendments.
Good evening, everybody. Ben Dawson, and I just wanted to say I participated in the Design Excellence Workshops, and I wanted to thank you guys for opening that up to the community. And, you know, I think every time citizens have the opportunity to show up and have their voices be heard, they should, or even to just show up and listen, so. Also, my wife is a fan of ciders, so happy to see they're getting their own permit spot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. Mr. Wilkins.
John Wilkins, 501 Fairview. So, gosh, it's got, this thing's got a lot of things in it, all different types of things. And I'm not sure if they're all heard good by the public, and especially the accessory dwelling units. I would like to see that pulled out of this and have that a separate conversation and maybe a separate public meeting, because I don't think people really saw this amongst all the other stuff. I know I didn't. The first time I read about what you were going to do with the ADUs was in the Missoula Union. And it was like a one, maybe two sentence, saying that they were going to change this to a right. I don't want to see that, but I think it's more important that the public knows what you're going to do. And I would like to see this pulled out and made a separate item. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Sam Sill, and I'm here on behalf of the Missoula Organization of Realtors. I'm very happy to be here to speak in support of almost all of the proposed amendments to Title 20, with the exception of those relative to building as a sign. MOR is not a proponent of that, but I know the chamber's here this evening, so I'll leave it to Clint to, to speak more on that. But I would like to speak to a couple of what we view as the most important amendments being proposed. And I think by and large, the entire package of amendments is geared towards improving regulations and streamlining processes and so on. And that's something that I think is very important at this time as we try to grapple with housing affordability and as the city works towards policies in that direction. So the two that I'd like to pull out to talk about briefly are Teds and the accessory dwelling units. We believe that townhome exemption developments have a lot of opportunity for attainable homeownership scenarios. And, you know, to date, the efficiencies that we've achieved through Teds have been passed on to the benefit of consumers. The Aspen Grove Townhome Exemption Development, the townhomes there, or townhouses rather, sold for about $230,000 to $240,000. Scott Street Village was another townhome exemption development project. The townhouses there sold for about $200,000 to $210,000. Single family were a bit more, at $240,000 to $260,000. These are price points that are frankly in short supply in the market right now, and they're price points that people around the area of median income can afford. It is what we would call attainable housing or workforce housing. So Teds have a big role in that. And I think what the proposed amendments really do is help us preserve TED as a, as an attainable housing tool. The amendments are largely supported by the findings of Making Missoula Home, which was the housing study that the city embarked upon with MOR last year that was released in January. In particular, or of particular importance are the cash-in-loof or parkland that's been proposed, as well as the amendments that clarify which standards apply and which do not to townhouse developments, or townhome exemption developments. There are some definite cost savings there that, you know, will benefit consumers. There isn't any one big, you know, easy solution to affordability. Part of it is regulatory reform, and part of it is hitting a lot of different individual reforms that will hopefully add up to a, you know, significant amount of money. And I think that what's been proposed for the townhome exemption developments definitely do that. It's a good step in the right direction, and we thank the staff for their hard work on those and the thoughtful vetting that they've been given to date by council. Accessory dwelling units are another way of helping with the affordability issue. We view those as something that can provide some moderately priced rentals within our existing neighborhoods in a way that I believe is minimally disruptive to neighborhood character. I think it's interesting that out of the, it was either 15 or 17 of those that have been approved and put through the conditional use process, there hasn't been one that didn't make it through the conditional use process to date. One thing that we found in Making Missoula Home was that the regulations on ADUs are perhaps a little bit excessively stringent. And what we've found from other communities is that when we start to peel back those regulations a little bit, you're going to see more ADUs come online. And I believe that's a good thing because what that will do is put some downward pressure on rents, increase options for renters, and really give renters a wider range of options as well as just more options. ADUs also help with infill, which is something we've said through the growth policy that we want to do. It reduces sprawl, certainly. And one thing that's interesting about ADUs is they're kind of a versatile housing option. They, it's something that I believe people, existing homeowners, could utilize to stay in their home in the face of increases in the cost of living. You know, it's something that you can, you know, start out, say, you're a younger family, you can rent it out. Maybe when your kid gets older and is looking to get started on a career, they can live with the ADU, you can rent it out to them. And then once you reach a point in life where the, the big house on the big lot doesn't make sense for you anymore, you can move into the ADU and not actually have to leave your neighborhood that you've spent all your time. And so it's, you know, there's definitely benefits to homeowners as well. I don't think it'd be fair to characterize this just as something that's going to benefit renters. Removing the, excuse me, removing the conditional use process, I think, will be a big deal. It's a $924 fee, I believe. And then, you know, sometimes people have to hire a consultant to get through the process, the conditional use process, which is, you know, certainly going to add costs, and there are cost savings. I think staff, for the city, I think staff figured it was about $3,000 to $4,000 per ADU that's permitted. So that's, you know, something that I think's definitely worth noting. And one thing I would like to, you know, just for the benefit of folks that are watching this or who are, you know, in existing neighborhoods that might be concerned, it's not as if removing this conditional use process means that ADUs will no longer be regulated. ADUs are still going to have to be approved by the city. They have to comply with zoning standards, including minimum parking standards and design rules. There's an owner occupancy requirement, so either the primary dwelling or the ADU has to be occupied by the person who owns the property that it's on. And there's a square footage limitation, the ADU can't be any larger than 600 square feet, which I think I could argue with limits their usefulness to some extent, but that also makes sure that you're probably only, you only have one person living in one at any given time. So, you know, beyond that, the applicants have to notify the neighbors, and there is an annual permit requirement. So it's not as if I think we're just, you know, blowing the gates open relative to ADUs. We are removing one process that probably is unnecessary and is certainly adds expense and will lead to less ADUs coming online. But at any rate, I encourage the council to pass these amendments, with the exception of building as a sign. And, you know, this is sort of a, I guess, first steps for the city, so to speak, in addressing its affordability issues and bringing sound housing policies forward. And it certainly represents a win, albeit maybe a small one for the city and for consumers of housing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sill. Yes, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Erin Miller, and I'm an organizer for Ford, Montana, and I'm also a renter in the University District. I hope that council will adopt this ordinance today, as many studies and real-life examples in other towns and cities show that taking away barriers to building ADUs can help increase the housing density, which of course is an important prong to battling this housing crisis that we're currently in. However, I want to be clear that, in stating that allowing a quicker process to build ADUs throughout Missoula is by no means a final solution to our housing affordability crisis. Increasing density with ADUs is a good first step in the right direction, but it is just that, a good first step. And it's great to increase density, but as a renter who pays 60% of my income to rent every single month, I'm always down for more affordable rentals because there are so few. But ADUs will not necessarily be affordable without some type of incentive or restriction to make them so. I realize there may also be some benefits for low to moderate home buyers to help afford their mortgage and, is that me?
That's me, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, okay. And while that is a plus, you know, we don't have enough data on ADUs in the community to really measure their impact on individual housing prices and the housing market overall. So, with that being said, allowing an easier path to develop ADUs is necessary to increase density, which is why I hope you will pass this ordinance. But as the city moves forward with housing solutions, I ask that you don't simply think of development in terms of density and added property tax. But as our city government, please keep in mind that housing affordability is a complex problem that's going to require a number of solutions. And I hope that when you consider the myriad of solutions possible, you'll continue to speak with and seek insight from the enormous renter population in Missoula that is so sparsely represented by our elected government. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Anyone else this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Clint Burson for the Chamber of Commerce. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to read and review the comments that the chamber submitted last week. Rather than repeat those points here, I'm just going to keep it pretty short. I'd like to reiterate the chamber's proposal or urging you to consider removing Section H under 20.75.170, the building as a sign section of the proposed updates. Enacting this measure risks making the commercial property development process more timely, or more time-consuming, more costly, and also creates less predictability. If you have any questions about our previous comments or would like to discuss them further, I'm available to you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Burson. Anyone else this evening? All right, with that, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council members? May I will note for the record that Ms. Armstrong is no longer in attendance. Questions? Questions? Ms. Hart?
Lavelle and Jen, I just want to make sure that somewhere in the correct document that the lapse of approval is spelled correctly and that it has an E at the end of it?
I will double check that.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Further questions? Mr. Ramos? Okay, Ms. Becerra?
Jen, could you repeat the number of ADUs that have been approved since, you know, since the beginning, I guess?
Let me find that page. I believe it's 24 have been requested, 17 have been conditional use.
Great, thank you.
Further questions? Seeing none, Mr. DeBary?
I move that council adopt a City of Missoula-initiated ordinance generally amending Title 20, Missoula Municipal Code, the city zoning ordinance, to incorporate updates in the following chapters. 20.05 residential districts, 20.10 business and commercial districts, 20.15 industrial and manufacturing districts, 20.25 overlay districts, 20.40 use and building specific standards, 20.45 accessory uses and structures, 20.60 parking and access, 20.65 landscaping, 20.75 signs, 20.85 review and approval procedures, 20.90 administration, 20.100 terminology, and 20.105 use classifications.
That motion is in order. Is there discussion on the motion?
May I speak to it briefly?
You may.
First of all, I just want to thank Jen and the folks in the planning division for the immense amount of work that went into doing this. I had a conversation with Jen earlier and she said that she was going to make this short and general and I'd hate to see the unabridged version. Actually, we did see it because we spent four LUP committee meetings talking about, well, the first one was just an introduction and then three of them dealt with each specific item in turn. And there was ample amount of time for both public and council discussion regarding it. And so we affectionately call this Title 20 Annual Maintenance. And I think the point of this is that this gives the community and council and staff an opportunity on a yearly basis to think carefully about how our Title 20 is actually working. And it gives us the opportunity to think carefully about what may not be working in a particular instance. And so I really appreciate staff's adaptability in terms of bringing forward things that they have experienced through use of Title 20 that may need tweaking, the responsiveness that they have towards comments that they receive from folks in the community, and also responsiveness that they have towards city council and our interest to see certain things change as well. So I think that this is a great example of adaptive management. It's sort of adaptive management at its best. We're able to see what's working and what isn't and make those changes as we see fit. And it also gives us an opportunity to understand what conditions are changing in the community and be adaptive to that as well. So I'm looking forward to supporting these amendments.
Further discussion? Ms. Jones?
Thanks for the presentation, Jen. I wanted to propose an amendment, which is for Section 20.45.060B regarding accessory uses and structures. And my amendment would be to reinstate the previously existing language regarding the conditional use process requirement, which necessitates a public hearing in front of city council, and I wanted to speak to that.
Ms. Jones?
So I have a pretty good sense of where this is going on council, and frankly, I easily see both sides of the issue regarding the conditional use process for ADUs. But we had a really robust discussion regarding this in committee, and I think it's worth it to, it's constructive to have that robust discussion in this very public forum. And I wanted to say, Mr. Sill, you were extremely eloquent going through the reasons. So thanks for hitting on all of those. But I kind of wanted to add a little bit more context to this discussion regarding ADUs. I was not on council five years ago when the ADU law went through. I think it's actually a really good law in general because it creates good construction that does add to the character of the neighborhood. But my understanding is it's pretty common knowledge that it was an extremely contentious discussion five or six years ago when that went through. And out of respect for the fact that it was a very contentious issue and an extremely close vote that basically hinged on the addition of the conditional use process, my sense in that I represent neighborhoods in which this ADU law applies is that, first of all, ADUs, I think, are being accepted within these neighborhoods. But it's a process, and I think it could use a few more years to season, frankly. And I don't think this is going to make a huge dent in terms of affordable housing. I think the future is clear that in the long run, these will not be conditional uses with a public hearing. But I would like to take a slower approach where basically by having had this discussion this year, neighborhoods have put on notice that this is a matter of time before the conditional use is removed. So that's the basis for my amendment. I do certainly recognize that it is a multifaceted issue, and I actually really hope that people put their two cents in from council because it's a big shift. It was a big shift five years ago, and this is a big shift also. Our world is rapidly changing, and although all of us intimately involved in city government have a finger on the pulse, I don't know that everybody else out there in Missoula always is up to speed to where we are up to speed. So for that reason, I'm making the amendment. I hope we have this discussion, and thank you for your time.
Ms. Jones has made an amendment to the main motion. That amendment is in order. Is there discussion on the motion to amend? Mr. Von Lausberg?
Thanks. I appreciate the amendment from Ms. Jones. I'm not going to support the amendment. Mr. Sill, as Gwen alluded to, did a fantastic job of describing the rules that still exist around ADUs. And I guess in particular, look at the fact that we've had the 17 come through conditional use review, and it hasn't been that any of those have even been closed. They've all been, not unanimously, overwhelmingly approved with virtually no changes. And I think that speaks to the robustness of the rules, and there's multiple ways to look at those rules. And Mr. Sill actually, you know, appropriately commented about some of the restrictive aspects of those. But I think what we see is that those rules that do exist have set things up such that we haven't needed to make virtually any changes. And I am sensitive to the cost impact, and frankly, there are lower-income homeowners and properties that I think would avail themselves of this option. And I'd like to make it a, I'd like to lower the barrier for those folks. We've had, I think, robust discussion about how housing is linked to so many other aspects of societal life. And the ones that I've been thinking about the most, just because where I am in life right now are healthcare and childcare and elderly, you know, parents that you might be able to help out in some fashion like this. And I think this streamlining, this review and the cost savings associated with it, there's some real benefits for those folks that we could realize. But I'll be respectfully not supporting the amendment.
Further discussion on the motion to amend? Ms. Merritt?
Thanks. Mr. Von Lausberg touched on pretty much all of the things that I was going to say as well. I do feel for the folks in the neighborhoods where the conditional use for ADUs currently applies and understand their concerns. I think the item that's been repeated about having 17 of these go through in the last five years without any substantial changes leads me to believe that the cost associated with both on the applicant side developing the ADUs and on staff's side for processing the applications does not seem to be time and money well-spent, in my opinion. So I won't be supporting the amendment either. Thanks.
Further discussion? Mr. Bary?
I will not be supporting the motion either. As many of my colleagues have said, we've had a number of these happen over the last five years. And in previous commentary at public meetings, there was a point made that council should be listening to the folks in the community. And I think that that is what happened when this passed the last time, that there was a real understanding of the comments made by people from the community, and we created a law that reflected that. And as I mentioned in my opening comments, things change over time, and I think it's important for council and staff and the community to be adaptive to those changes. I think as we've seen over time with accessory dwelling units that have been approved, they are meeting the intent and letter of the law, and they seem to be fitting well into the neighborhoods in which they're being placed, largely due to the fact that we have good rules around this. And I think that if that wasn't the case, there wouldn't have been a proposal to change from the conditional use process. So I think over time, we had an experiment and we looked at how things went, and now we're adapting to how the conditions have changed. And for many of the reasons my fellow council members have spoken, I think it helps us meet important administrative and community goals to move forward with the change at this time.
Further discussion? Ms. Hart?
I too will not be supporting the amendment. I feel like we've had five years to kind of think about this. And to John's point, you know, we've had our community kind of get used to the idea of implementing ADUs. And what's happened in the last five years is that housing costs have gone up 25%. And in the meantime, going back to, I think, to Ms. Miller's comment, we haven't seen wages go up 25%. And so we still have the other part of the equation that we still have to address, and that's bringing up wages as a whole, so that we don't have to necessarily think about it always from a regulatory point of view, but that's what's in our toolbox at this point in time. And so I respectfully decline to agree with Gwen on this one.
Further discussion on the motion to amend? Ms. Becerra?
I will not be supporting the amendment. I just wanted to mention that although ADUs are not necessarily considered affordable places to live, I do think that they allow for whoever rents these dwelling units to save up enough to become homeowners. Sometimes that's the first step in becoming a homeowner. So I think they're a great tool that we have right now to increase the number of people that can afford to buy a home in Missoula, and also to address the huge gap that we have right now between people wanting to rent and not having enough rental units. Thank you.
Anyone else on the motion to amend? Anyone in the audience care to comment on the motion to amend? Mr. Wilkins?
John Wilkins, 501 Fairview. Thank you, Gwen. You did that very elegant. I probably wouldn't have been elegant, I'd probably be cussing and swearing a little bit, but that's me. You know, I can really see the way you guys are going. And I will say, five years ago, it wasn't that easy. I had a protest letter of over 200 people that went to the city clerk's office, you could probably dig it up somewhere, that wasn't that easy. People were against it. They came in here, they were against it. And so it wasn't that easy, John, as you think it was. It's kind of sad for one thing, I think they're illegal in single-family zoning for the simple reason you're adding another dwelling place to a single-family zone. So you need to change the zoning then, because it's no longer a single family. And there's a way you've got to do that. So I realize that this isn't going to work here, that you guys are not even going to give it a second thought. So I will be taking this to the state legislative on zoning and see what they have to say about it. Thank you.
Anyone else on the motion to amend? All right, seeing none, I think we can have a voice vote on the motion to amend. Those in favor, please say aye. Was opposed? Motion fails. We're back to the main motion. Further discussion? Ms. Merritt?
Thanks. I would like to make a motion to amend the proposed language in Section 20.100.101 terminology. Specifically, I would like to amend the definition, the proposed definition of the term attached, such that the last portion of the definition, as it is proposed, would be stricken, specifically to remove the phrase "the roof of which is an extension of the principal building or designed to be visually integrated." If this motion were approved, that definition would then read "two or more structures are considered attached when they share at least part of a common wall or are connected by structural elements such as a covered porch, portico, or passageway." Can I speak to that?
That motion is in order? Discussion on the motion to amend? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Merritt?
I just want to say that I understand creating these definitions and finding the exact language is always difficult. And one would hope that when you define a term, it makes it more clear to the people who have to use it. And just in my opinion, that last portion of the definition that was added, "the roof of which is an extension of the principal building or designed to be visually integrated," is pretty laden with kind of judgmental or judgment terms that will need to be further defined by every staff person that comes across that language. And so that's the reason why I would like to see that language amended.
Discussion on the motion to amend? Seeing, Mr. DeBary?
I would like to ask staff if they could speak to the proposed amendment.
Ms. Gress or Ms. Means?
We, you know, we appreciate that point about it being more in the area of making a call for when something is visually integrated, but in terms of, you know, the purpose of that language was to make it a thoughtful process and not something that is added on after the fact. And the idea of adding the language was intended to do that, to make it be an extension and something that is incorporated into a design of a project at the onset instead of putting a roof on and having no integration to it at all. That being said, we can work with, you know, we're making progress on the attached definition by having something. And I know that Planning Board did spend a lot of time talking about the common wall and covered roof, and that is really a key feature.
Thank you, Ms. Means. Further discussion? Mr. DeBary?
I know this has come up a couple of times, and I think we've been just struggling with what the right language is around this. And I think that, you know, the Planning Board came up with a very simple definition, and we had a conversation regarding this at committee. And I guess, I think I'm going to err on the side of staff's language largely because they're the ones who wrote it and they're the ones who have to implement this. And if it's clear to them how this definition works and can communicate it clearly to members of the public, then I think that that will work best. So I will not support the motion.
Further discussion on the motion to amend? Mr. Von Lausberg?
I think Ms. Merritt spoke well to it. It's, I think, a case of less is more, and I'm going to support the amendment.
Further discussion? Anyone in the audience care to parse some words this evening? Seeing none of that? Seeing none of that, we'll have a voice vote on the motion to amend. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I can't count. Ms. Raybine, would you?
I was hoping, because I was going to try to figure out how to tally as well. Debary? Debary votes no. Harp? Harp votes no. Hess? Hess votes no. Jones? Jones votes no. Merritt? Merritt votes yes. Ramos? Ramos votes yes. Von Losberg? Von Losberg votes yes. Anderson?
No.
Anderson votes no. Becerra?
No.
Becerra votes no. Kares?
Yes.
Kares votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That is four ayes, six nays, and two absent.
And the motion to amend fails. We're back to the main motion. Any additional amendments? Mr. Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to start off by saying that I'm actually a big fan of the Title 20 changes in general. It definitely passes my test and is going in the direction of less government, not more. So I'm very happy about that. But today, I had the privilege of having lunch with Councilman Wilkins, and we had a long discussion, kind of about the changes and his concerns to it. And I was already kind of leaning this direction anyways, and it was nice to have lunch with Mr. Wilkins. And I think he's trying to teach me a little more about statesmanship. So in that regard, I would like to propose a bureaucratic change, not necessarily change of any of your minds. I would just like to request an amendment to separate all the proposed changes to Section 20.45.060 relating to ADUs and Sections 20.75 and 20.100 relating to signs, and have those changes voted on separately. So I'm just proposing a vote for changes to Section 20.45.060 as a separate vote, and then changes to Section 20.7 on building as a sign as a separate vote. And then one final vote for the remainder of the changes.
Okay, so Mr. Ramos has asked that we separate the question, which we can certainly do. Is there a further discussion on the motion before the body? Mr. Von Losberg?
The main motion? All right, I'll use this opportunity. So I think, I'm not sure there will be another opportunity for this. I've struggled a little bit with the "building as a sign" language. I, in committee, had proposed deleting one of the sections, and that didn't pass, and I'm not going to take another cut at that. I take to heart the comments from the chamber. There's a degree of subjectivity to this that I think is inherent. I also think we, this has been a good stab at the building as a sign issue. I struggled also a bit trying to approach it a different way and try to make it a case where you had to be in violation of two of the sections rather than just one. And I couldn't structure it in a way that I was happy with. The good part of this is that we do this on an annual basis with Title 20. So I'll be very interested in seeing a year from now what the real effect of this particular section has been, and won't hesitate to take another stab at making the determination that a building is in violation with a perhaps require multiple sections. My sense is that if we were to look at more buildings around the community, we'd find some surprising ones in addition to the review that was done that are in violation. But we've got a chance to collect some data on this, and I'll leave it at that. I, instead of leaving it at that, I want to also thank staff for all of their work on this. There's a number, there's all kinds of good aspects to this update. In particular, I just wanted to thank folks, you know, within the ADU section, there's a thing about the floor area and the ability to make use of more energy-efficient walls, having to do with their thickness. And we needed to tweak some language to make that happen. And those little sorts of things make a big difference to real citizens within the community. And they get lost in the discussion about some of the weightier topics, but I appreciate all the work on it.
Further discussion? All right. So staff may leave before I have a chance to say this under communication from the mayor, so I'll say it now. There's nobody on this council who remembers when we created Title 20 as council members, which makes me old. What I will tell you is that the work that went into that document on the part of staff and on the part of the community and council and Planning Board was remarkable. And the fact that we have a document as frankly elegant as this one is today, and the fact that we treat it as a living document, is critical to the success of the community. The fact that we can dust this off, make adjustments as community changes, as we see challenges, is, I think, remarkable and a fine example of good government doing what it's supposed to do on behalf of the citizens we serve. And thanks to staff, this is a heavy lift every time, and I'm grateful. The easy way would be to just ignore it. We got Title 20, we got that done, let's call it a shift. But we engage every year in changing it, and I think it changes for the better with each iteration. So thank you all for that. With that, we will have a roll call vote, and let's, I'll try to simplify this for you. Let's have a roll call vote on everything but the ADU piece and the businesses as signs piece. Is that good for everyone?
Everything but.
Hmm?
Everything buts?
Everything but, correct. Does that work for you, Marty?
So on all portions of the ordinance except for the accessory dwelling units and the building as sign provisions, Harp?
Yes.
Harp votes yes. Hess? Hess votes yes. Jones? Jones votes yes. Merritt? Merritt votes yes. Ramos? Ramos votes yes. Von Losberg? Von Losberg votes yes. Anderson? Anderson votes yes. Becerra? Becerra votes yes. Kares? Kares votes yes. And Debary? Debary votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? It's 10 ayes and two absent.
And on the ADU question?
And hang on just a second. Let me enter a note. On accessory dwelling units, Hess?
Yes.
Hess votes yes. Jones? Jones votes no. Merritt? Merritt votes yes. Ramos? Ramos votes no. Von Losberg? Von Losberg votes yes. Anderson?
Yes.
Anderson votes yes. Becerra? Becerra votes yes. Kares? Kares votes yes. Debary? Debary votes yes. Harp?
Yes.
Harp votes yes. And did I call Hess already? Yes, okay. Yes, yes, I did. So the tally here is eight ayes, two nays, and two absent.
And on the business as signs piece?
And, let's do that. On the business as a sign part of the regulations, Jones? Jones votes yes. Merritt? Merritt votes yes. Ramos? No. Ramos votes no. Von Losberg? Von Losberg votes no. Anderson? Anderson votes yes. Becerra? Becerra votes yes. Kares? Kares votes no. Debary? Debary votes yes. Harp? Harp votes yes. And Hess? Hess votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That tally is seven ayes, three nays, and two absent.
And all in, the cleanup, the ordinance is approved. Our final public hearing this evening is on an ordinance amending Chapter 2.42 of Regarding Municipal Court Fees and That Schedule. And our staff report this evening comes from Ms. Raybine.
Hi, I'm Marty Raybine, your city clerk, and I'm giving a brief staff report, hopefully with some assistance from Mr. Nugent, about the municipal court fees. The city is currently, there's a court case at the Supreme Court that's challenging the city's use of fees, to administrative fees, because they are in resolution form. They were approved by City Council by resolution. So the action before the council tonight is actually to put these fees in ordinance form, which is required by the state law. And there's a proposal, a proposed ordinance, emergency ordinance, to place those fees in immediate effect, because otherwise they would not go into effect for 30 days. There is absolutely no change in the existing court fees proposed with this ordinance. The current fee is $25 that is attached to any conviction in municipal court. And there's also a time pay fee of $5. It's my understanding that that fee is not generally levied by the judge. There is discretion written in the ordinance to allow the judge to waive that fee. There has been some concern during this process about folks not being able to pay fines and judges routinely. It's not lawful for them to create a debtor's prison, if you will, by levying fines to people who are indigenous and cannot pay them. And so usually, they will levy your fines and then suspend them in their entirety, which means the person does not have to pay them as part of the judgment. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Nugent if he has any clarifying comments he'd like to make, and we're here for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. With that, I will open the public hearing on the question. Anyone interested this evening? We've got attrition going on in the audience. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council members? Ms. Kares?
Did Mr. Nugent have anything to add?
I was going to observe, and I'm not sure if Marty made this clear, that it pertains to all fees of the court, and that includes the copying fees and items like that. Historically, the City Council has utilized resolutions to establish all its fees, and this has went on for quite a number of years. But as Marty and I discussed this, Marty indicated that it's not simply the surcharge at the statute. There's two statutes that say fines and fees established by ordinance. And so I just want to be sure that you realize it's broader than the surcharge. The surcharge is being attacked on more than one legal ground at the Supreme Court by the public defenders. Interestingly, the issue about it being by resolution rather than by ordinance is kind of a belated issue that just was raised at the Supreme Court. And there's a chance that at this time, the Supreme Court might say you failed to raise that issue at the lower courts, and the lower courts have all ruled in favor of the city. But it will have it available then to raise it again in the future. It doesn't end the issue. So it's important to continue with this process. Since current state law says ordinance, we should establish it by ordinance. Both an ordinance and resolution obviously require City Council action, and the City Council governing body makes the decision. But these statutes are pretty old statutes. They're decades old, and they use the word ordinance rather than resolution.
Further questions? Seeing none, Ms. Harp?
Okay. Final motion. I move to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 2.42 Missoula Municipal Code, establishing Section 2.42.015, entitled Establishment of Municipal Court Administrative Fees, Section 2.42.017, entitled Administrative Fees and Charges Assessed Prior to June 4th, 2018, in order to fulfill the requirements of 46-17-402 Montana Code annotated, that administrative fees charged by municipal court be enacted by ordinance.
That motion is in order. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we've had a, I'm sorry, Ms. Kares?
I voted against this last time I had the chance, and I just wanted to speak a little bit to that and share how I was going to vote tonight. I had felt uncomfortable voting in favor, primarily because we weren't a part of the 2013 resolution setting of 7784 that set this change in fee, and I hadn't had the time to review the minutes and fully understand the resolution. As the council lead on the jail diversion master plan and generally pretty involved in the criminal justice conversation, I just didn't, hadn't, wasn't ready to vote yes. And so I just wanted to say that is why I had previously voted no, and appreciate Ms. Raybine's comments today regarding the fines and fees and the debtor's prison and circle of impoverishment. So I'll be voting in favor today and appreciate the effort. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Kares. Further discussion? So Ms. Raybine points out that with the dependency of the work at the Supreme Court for us, we can enact this ordinance, but it doesn't come alive for a period of time. So we need an emergency ordinance piece of this as well, that's not on your agenda without it.
The documents attached, the agenda just, I'm sorry. The document is attached to the materials that have been made available to the public, and it was noticed. We just didn't put the motion on the agenda to adopt the emergency ordinance.
Okay. So we're good.
As long as it's part of Ms. Harp's motion to approve the emergency ordinance.
It is part of my motion.
I thought you said that. Thank you. That'll be great. Thank you.
All right. I'm largely superfluous to this process at this point, so we've had a public hearing. Seeing no further discussion, we'll have a roll call vote.
Okay. On the regular ordinance and the emergency ordinance, Merritt? Merritt votes yes. Ramos? Ramos votes yes. Von Losberg? Von Losberg votes yes. Anderson? Anderson votes yes. Becerra? Becerra votes yes. Kares? Kares votes yes. Debary? Debary votes yes. Harp?
Yes.
Harp votes yes. Hess? Hess votes yes. And Jones? Jones votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That is 10 ayes and two absent.
Thank you. We have no additional public hearings this evening. We'll move on to communications from the mayor, since Ms. Gress and Ms. Means are still here. Are you guys just here because you're afraid somebody will change their mind? We'll move on to general comments from council members, starting with Mr. Debary this evening. Ms. Jones?
I just wanted to say congratulations to all of the local area high school seniors who graduated this last weekend. It was a big weekend. I wanted to wish you all well in your future endeavors and urge you to be good citizens by educating yourselves and finding out what's going on in your community, hopefully voting. And finally, I hope you can find, as individuals, some opportunity for service in your community, because many hands make light work. And I think giving to your community is one of the best ways to become engaged, knowledgeable, and contribute.
Ms. Merritt?
Mr. Von Losberg? Thanks. Two quick things. In addition to the thanks to staff, I want to thank Committee Chair Dr. Debary for his work, working with staff and managing the meetings for the Title 20 cleanup. Lendings and planning chair requires a lot of work and prep and coordination, and that was, again, evident as we went through the Title 20. So thank you, John. And secondly, I appreciate Councilman Ramos bringing up the Perkins Coie portion of the claims. It made me think about Harry Schneider, who was our attorney, is our attorney through Perkins Coie. And alongside Ms. Jones and other members of staff, it's hard to imagine getting a better attorney for the dollar than Harry Schneider, if you watched him during the condemnation trial. And throughout the entire process, it was some of the best money we've spent.
Ms. Becerra?
I would like to thank staff for all the work on Title 20. I know
I know the way you presented it to us makes it look like it's something that you guys can do like this, and I know how much work goes into it, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Kares? Mr. Hess? Ms. Anderson?
I do want to echo the sentiments from my fellow council members, to staff, as well as to Chairman Dr. Debary. As a new council member, this has been drinking from the fire hose, and I appreciate the guidance and the thoughtfulness that goes behind it, and appreciate all the time. I do want to acknowledge that this week is, before council, many of my fellow council members and I spent some time with the New Leaders Institute, which is happening this week at the University of Montana, which is a nonpartisan, week-long institute for young women, undergraduate women from across Montana who come to Missoula. And we talk about ways to get civically involved in leadership and how bills become laws, and we will be taking them to Helena to meet the governor and tour the Capitol this Wednesday. And it's a great way, as Councilmember Jones said, for people to get involved. And I am continually impressed, this is the second year we've done this institute, at the level of professionalism and smarts that these young women have. And I feel like the future of Montana, if they stay in Montana and stay engaged, is in good hands.
Ms. Harp?
Looks like we get to do this all over again in just a matter of a few months, so get ready for the next ones. But other than that, Shay Keen, if you're watching, happy birthday.
Mr. Ramos?
I just wanted to echo my fellow council members and thank Dr. Debary, who was very helpful with this very tedious task, and I know that he put in a lot of extra hours in on this. And just to briefly touch on this, because I've talked time and time again, and it's late, but I don't have any problem with the skills of Perkins Coie. I obviously think they're good attorneys. I'm just nosy and cheap, so I think we all know why I vote a no, so let's wrap it up for the night. Thanks, guys.
We have no committee reports, nor do we have any new business. Are there any additional items to be referred? Seeing none of those, any miscellaneous communications, reports, petitions, or announcements? Seeing none, as always, I thank you for your service. We will be adjourned.